Welcome to all of you and good morning in Wichita. We'll call the meeting to order. With us this morning is Pastor Ryan Evans of Friendship Baptist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we ask that you please stand for both.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you thanking you for this great nation that you've put your blessing upon and for Wichita specifically. Well, I thank you that we have the ability to come and meet and try to express our freedoms and try to understand what's best for our city. I thank you for our mayor and her associates to try to just do what's best for the people of Wichita. So Father, I ask you give wisdom right now to so many people with decisions to make that are very important that affect people's lives. And I ask that you just help us to have complete understanding from you and what you would have us to do to keep our city to be moral, to keep our city to be honoring you. And Father, I thank you so much that we have a relationship with you because of what Jesus Christ did on the cross for our sins and His resurrection that gives us life eternal. We are thankful for the people of this city and the ones that are trying to help us to follow you more clearly. We ask all these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Evans. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of regular meeting July 1st, 2025.
Council members, any items to be changed or edited? I see none. I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. The proclamations this week are Guadalupe Clinic's 40th Anniversary, Wichita Lineman's Day, and the award is Recognition of WSU Tech Students National Recognition at the 2025 Skills USA Championship.
May I please ask the Guadalupe Clinic friends and supporters to come forward, including Vice Mayor J V Johnston. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas Guadalupe Clinic was founded by five nurses who worked at St. Francis Hospital and doctors Dan and Olga Tetpati soon after began providing medical care. Whereas Guadalupe Clinic provides free medical and vision care to those living at or below 200% of the federal poverty line without Medicare, without Medicaid, or any insurance of any kind. Whereas over 60 medical professionals consisting of 38 physicians and additional healthcare workers give their time and services to care for the working poor and the poor. Whereas Guadalupe Clinic partners with the KU School of Medicine, the Kansas College of Medicine, Wichita State University's Physical Therapy Program, Newman University's Nursing Program, and many others to provide quality medical care to the underserved and education for students entering health sciences. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim Guadalupe Clinic's 40th Anniversary."
Thank you Lilly. My name is Tom Sanders. I'm the chairman of the Guadalupe Clinic Board of Directors. I want to thank the city council for recognizing us today. And I certainly want to thank J V Johnston. As you can imagine, he's a fantastic leader and he and his team do a tremendous job at the clinic. But most of all, I'd like to thank the Wichita community. Without your support, we would not be in existence. We depend on the Wichita community for volunteers. Most of the work that is done at the clinic is done by volunteers, serving the poorest of the poor in our community and our many, many donors who we depend on. All of our funding comes from donors in our community. And of course, we work very hard to get whatever grants we can. But we have no revenue from other organizations, no revenue from the diocese, no revenue from the city, no revenue from insurance organizations, as Lilly mentioned, no revenue from Medicaid or anything else. So it depends on the support of the community. And thankfully, Wichita is a very generous community and I thank you very, very much for your support.
Thank you, Tom. May I please ask the Alzheimer's Association as well as Travis Campbell and his family to please come forward at this time. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas Wichita Lineman, written by Jimmy Webb and popularized by Glenn Campbell in 1968, has become one of the most iconic and enduring songs in American music history. Whereas Wichita Lineman has helped place the city of Wichita in the hearts and imaginations of listeners worldwide, highlighting the spirit, resilience, and dedication of the working men and women of America. Whereas the songs stand as a timeless tribute to the strength and perseverance of the American worker, especially those whose labor often goes unseen but is vital to the success of their communities. Whereas a national tribute concert, Branson's Tribute to Glenn Campbell, will be held on July 13th, 2025 honoring the legacy of this celebrated music and supporting the Alzheimer's Association through all event proceeds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim July 13th, 2025 as Wichita Lineman Day in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to celebrate the enduring legacy of this remarkable song and the cultural pride it continues to inspire." Before we have our guests come and speak, we'll just play a little bit of that iconic song, Wichita Lineman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Travis Campbell. I'm the eldest son of Glenn Campbell. I just wanted to say thank you so much for doing this, for Dad. He was an incredible individual. He was very personable. I mean, growing up, I grew up in Los Angeles. I've lived here in the Wichita area for 25 years. I met my wife, who was from Winfield, on an airplane, you know. And so, you know, and it's funny because people ask me, you know, why I moved to Wichita? And I tell them, I moved there looking for that lineman guy, you know, you can't find him anywhere. He eloped with Dorothy, he must have, you know. But back to my father, growing up with Dad as who he was, I didn't realize that when I was a kid, what an icon he was. Back in Los Angeles, you know, in the living room at any one time, there'd be Mel Tullis, Johnny Cash, Buck Owens. And I had no idea as a child, the icons that they would later become. And at that time, I didn't even understand, you know, the icon that Dad was. I mean Wichita Lineman was one of the first songs that I remember hearing on the radio as a kid. And then it wasn't until Rhinestone Cowboy came out when I was a little bit older that I kind of realized, you know, what was happening. And I also wanted to thank Marshall, who is Mel Tullis's grandson in Branson. He's a city council member in Branson and he's the one that kind of coordinated this with you guys. And then basically with Dad, you know, who he was, and with Alzheimer's. Obviously, I want to recognize, you know, the awful disease of Alzheimer's. It was sad because towards the end of his life, you know, you could sit there with him. And for those of you that have had family members that have Alzheimer's, you could sit there with him for a long time. I'd be sitting there with him for a couple hours and you don't think he was really there. But then all of a sudden, he would look into your eyes and you'd see something click. You know, "I sure love you, son." You know, and it's memories like that that, you know, I'm so blessed. I am so blessed, you know, to have had those memories with him, you know. And everybody in the world, I mean, he was an incredible musician, entertainer. I mean, I'm not sure if you realize that he had the Glenn Campbell Good Time Hour and that started when he filled in for the Smothers Brothers. He hosted the Smothers Brothers Show, it was called the Smothers Brothers Summer Show. And everything that he did, he loved, you know, people. He was the most amicable person in the world and he would always give back. He was from Arkansas, you know, I mean, his roots were very much country. And what I was saying about how, you know, everyone, he was known around the world, you know, as an incredible entertainer, as a musician, and everyone knew him as Glenn Campbell, but I just called him Dad, you know. So thank you guys very, very much for doing this today. It is greatly appreciated. God bless you all.
Thank you very much. May I please now ask the WSU Tech students as well as staff to come forward at this time. How appropriate to have this right after Wichita Lineman. Each year, WSU Tech students put their skills to the test against the best and brightest from across the nation at the Skills USA Championship showcasing excellence in skilled trades, leadership, and service occupations. Many of our students here from our community went and competed at Skills USA Championship and came back as winners with medals. And we wanted to recognize them today at the city council meeting. So with them this morning are the recipients of those medals, Alex Lee, Kate and Graham, Ella Allender, Emma Bachman. We also have their instructors and advisors that I would like to ask to come and speak about the program so others can know about the opportunities to compete at Skills USA and the opportunities at WSU Tech, a premier organization that really empowers individuals to find their skills and their talents and puts them towards a career path. Jeremy King, Clint Cartwright, and Crystal Simmons.
Thank you Mayor. So Skills USA is a student-led career and technical education program composing of this year 445,000 members nationally. Every year, these students behind us, as well as many others, compete in career and technical ed programs such as architectural drafting, criminal justice, crime scene investigation, machining, welding, carpentry. They compete to showcase their skills that they're learning in the classroom and put those to the test against the best of the best from all over the country. This right here, these five, is just a sample of the amount of dedication and time that the students have put in for these awards. So, thank you again, Mayor.
And a small token of our appreciation for your hard work and dedication, we have Wichita pins to give to each of the students. So thank you all very much and thank you for recognizing these WSU Tech students who competed at Skills USA Championship. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. I just have one brief comment, especially for Glenn Campbell's family. This past December, I had the chance to be in the Philippines representing the country on behalf of the State Department. We met with the election commissioner of the country of the Philippines. I presented a flag flown over, or a flag from Wichita on behalf of the city. And the first and only thing the election commissioner knew about Wichita was Wichita Lineman and started singing it just in the room in front of everybody. And so I just wanted to pass it along that I know you had said the reach is far, but the reach is far and Glenn is seen as representative of Wichita across the world. So thank you and thank you for being here as well.
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Public Agenda.
Oh, sorry. We have one more. Vice Mayor J V Johnston.
Okay. Thank you Mayor. I also want to talk to the Campbells. The best concert I ever saw was John Denver at the Kansas Coliseum. And John Denver played for about an hour and 15 minutes, sent the band on break and stayed out there. And immediately saw Glenn Campbell sitting in the front row. Called him up and they sang songs, made up songs for another hour. The band was waiting to come back, break another hour, and then there's another hour and 15 minutes, three and a half hour concert. So it was fun to see Glenn Campbell up there with John Denver, another icon. Really, both of them enjoyed each other so much and had such a great time. I still remember it today. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Public Agenda. The Public Agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the Public Agenda other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Arthur Stokes, Black Mold.
Good morning crew, my city council crew. My first few moments will be a moment of silence for the stoned victims in Texas and the campground girls that all disappeared. And, you know, it's just so many people affected, families. And there was a little girl that drowned from a riptide from Arkansas in Florida Destin Beach. They never recovered her. So I'm going to give credence to that. Thank you. This morning, I had, we reviewed, we were looking at the Titanic and how problems arise and not just looking at, all of us really have a Titanic. You know, none of us in here are perfect and none of us in here are going to be without problems. And I've always wanted to get into the Titanic and, you know, I'm like, that's a good topic, you know. It shows a lot of how things are created and built. And I already had talked about the people that were on the Titanic. Thomas Andrews, Macy's Honor, Isidore Stratus. And all of these people were there as this unfolded and the destruction and the sinking of the Titanic. And I'm going to start, I think, just looking at this portion. It was like the designer assessed the damage and in the process, they had sawed that there was a berg, they had been worn. But instead, they got faster, they got louder, they were not listening, they were not communicating. You know, this is something that has to happen in any situation. There has to be some communication. So I'm going to start, it says, "In the crow's nest, two lookouts shivered as they peered into the night. The air temperatures around freezing. Had there been a moon, they would have seen the folds already off to the sides. Had there been a wind formed from breaking against the ice would have shown up against the white in the starlights. But the sky was moonless and the sea dead flat. Just before 11:40, about a mile south of the grand bank of Newfoundland, lookout Frederick Fleet squinted into the night and noticed that on the horizon ahead, the stars stared to wink out. Then he began to discern a shape perhaps a quarter mile away. Fleet rang the crow's nest bell and telephoned the bridge iceberg right ahead, he cried. The officer in charge immediately signed signal full speed astern to the engine room and directed the wheelman to turn hard aboard. The crow's nest lookout braced for a collision, but slowly the ship began to turn and slide by the iceberg. A wall of ice like a wind jammer with sails and colors of wet canvas. As one report put it, moved past the starboard railing, chunks fell into the deck. Some passengers playfully threw pieces of it at one another. Then the ice struck too many, it didn't seem much that a jar, certainly not hard enough for worry. In seconds, the ice disappeared into the darkness astern. But in sweltering boiler room between the bow and midship, a guster of water was draining strokers as they leaped through a quicker closing watertight door in the next compartment, too. Water was gushing in when the Titanic designer Andrew assessed the damage. It was already sinking and they was thinking that they had three days that they could stay afloat. And if they hadn't have been out there with no communication with the Californian, none of that would have even occurred. It wouldn't have even got that far. So that's how far I got into that. This is an interesting lesson. I just, I quit right there for the moment. So disaster has happened. My disaster has happened. I'm here, I'm glad to be here this morning. Y'all got questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you Mayor. Anybody got questions?
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
They were the only one who had signed up, so there are four spots available.
There are four spots available. If you would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Hello, can anybody hear me? Okay, good, because I got a big fat voice here. Good morning all of you. It looks like I see all my friendly faces up here. It occurred to me this morning that perhaps we ought to go bowling together. That would be fun, imagine that. And Bob, you could come too. But anyhow, my name is Bill Anderson. I live at 1227 Jefferson. It's in Wichita. I'm in Maggie's District. Sadie, Mary, Lady, congratulations, congratulations. The pictures I saw were wonderful. You're beaming, that looks good. This would be real quick. I'm here today to ask you not to enter into any program with ICE. You know what ICE is? Which would permit Wichita Police to assist ICE in their activities in Wichita. At a recent constitutional forum in Lawrence, I learned of ICE program 287G, which permits law enforcement to perform ICE functions. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't regale you with the ins and outs of this. And this may not be the only program. This is one I learned about at the forum. So if there's been any discussion about permitting this to happen, please make it public. We need to know if anybody here is supporting that. It'd be terrible, I'm not going to, the cons of this are just innumerable. So I thank you very much for that. One last thing, the slaughter, the war crimes in Gaza and Palestine continue. Please use your voice in any way that you can to speak out against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We have three more spots available for anyone who would like to address the council. I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 11.
Council members, are there items to be polled? I have two. I ask to poll 3A and 7. I move to approve the consent agenda. Without consent agenda items 3 and 7.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see, oh, sorry, Councilmember Johnson.
Just wanted to clarify, you said item 3. Do you mean 3A?
3A. 3A and 7. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. We'll begin with 3A. Public Works Director Gary Jansen, can you please give us an update regarding the new water treatment plant and what mechanical issues were identified that have delayed the completion of the project?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor and council members again. Gary Jansen, Public Works and Utilities. So the delay that's referenced in the specific item is related to some mechanical issues with the six clarifiers that are part of the new treatment plant. Clarification is one of the major components of the treatment process and had several mechanical issues with those clarifiers. Those repairs have effectively been completed at this time at no cost to the city. So confidence, what we call confidence testing, has resumed. That testing is done in an effort to make sure that the clarifiers are gonna operate as intended, that the repairs will do what they're supposed to do, so that these clarifiers will work again the way they were designed and built. So far, things going pretty well, moving through different parts of that process. Once we get through the confidence testing, not sure what that timeframe looks like just yet, we would move on to what would be final performance and acceptance testing of the entire plant and the entire process. So as of right now, we still intend that the city will take full ownership of the facility by the end of this year.
We've also gotten a couple of questions regarding Chenee. Can you please address the difference between the current Chenee levels versus the 12-month average?
Sure. So as everybody's aware, Chenee is nearly back to conservation pool. Last time I looked, I think it was within a half a foot, for sure. We get some intermittent rains here and there, and we're starting to see the impacts of evaporation already, so it's kind of steadied out at the moment. Current level is 97% give or take, but the 12-month running average, which we've talked about since we've been in drought restrictions, even with stage one, is currently about 63%. So our projections, if we were to, if Chenee stays at the current level, more or less, if it stays at conservation pool, is we would get back to 90% on the 12-month average sometime next spring, probably around March. And we feel it's important to stay the course with that 12-month running average before we consider lifting drought restrictions and watering restrictions as we have in place now. Needless to say, we'll really keep a close eye on things and see what happens. Over the last two years especially, if we look at weather data from then, we've lost up to two to three feet of elevation in Chenee just in July and August alone. So as we head into the hottest months of the year, not knowing it's gonna happen with precipitation and particularly inflow into the reservoir, we certainly want to avoid, we want to look for some stability and avoid the chance that we hop in and out of drought restrictions. So for right now, I really think we need to hang on and see what happens through the summer.
Mayor, if I could, just a reminder that we're gonna have a much more detailed discussion of our current situation and some conservation measures we'd like to bring forward to the council at the workshop on July 22nd.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we've talked about in the past about the, what's the word? The, when we take over, like the, what's the right word? I'm so sorry, I'm trying to think. We've talked about it before, JV was not in favor for it, I'm sorry to throw you under the bus, the warranties, geez.
The warranties, yeah.
I'm so sorry, thank you. That was a struggle. Those will still not, we will still not start those warranties slash extended warranties until we take over.
More or less, yes. Particularly with the repairs that are being made of the clarifiers, yes.
Okay.
And those are some of the details we're still working through.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
No, good question, thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I just looked it up. Chenee is point forty-three hundredths of an inch below normal. So I get this question every day at the YMCA about Chenee and water plants. Anyway, people can track it. Just go to the Chenee Lake Reservoir Water Level and you can pull it up and find out where it's at. Thank you.
Not to split hairs, Vice Mayor, but that's forty-three hundredths of a foot, just to be clear, which is around the half a foot that I was talking about. So it's, at this point in time, for all intents and purposes, we're basically back to conservation pool.
He doesn't say that, but I'll believe you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And on this note, just, anyone can go to savewichitawater.com at any time. And not only does it monitor the 12-month average, which is the most important factor, I think, to look at this, not just what the level is now, as you mentioned, but also just to keep people vigilant about conservation. We're still in water restrictions one day a week for outside irrigation. Tips that you can, you can utilize to make sure that, you know, you're following all the guidelines. And we need to, as I mentioned, stay incredibly vigilant about water conservation, even when Chenee looks great, it may not in the future. So thank you for all you do and for all your team.
I agree, thank you.
And I'll just round out one more question, since we're talking about the water treatment plant. Can you tell us one more time the importance of this new water treatment plant in helping us stave off some of the drought worries that we have, but also helps us with treating two sets of water pipes?
Sure. You know, one of the biggest values of this treatment plant, when it's fully operational, is our flexibility in being able to treat our water sources. So right now, we're, and in the future, we will continue to treat probably some blend of raw water from both Chenee as our surface water supply and from the Equis beds as our groundwater supply. Our current plant has some restrictions based on how it was built, the technology at the time, especially related to filtration, that we're limited on the amount of groundwater that we can treat. We can treat 100% surface water at the current plant, but we can only treat up to about 45% groundwater, so that limits our flexibility. This new plant will have the ability, if Chenee is not available, to treat 100% groundwater. So that is really important for long-term resilience in conservation going forward and our ability to continue to extend our public water supply.
Thank you, Gary. I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve consent agenda item 3A.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. We will now go to consent agenda item number seven. My questions for consent agenda item number seven are, can you please provide an inventory of the number of buses, vans that the city currently has in its fleet? Will the local match dollars be accounted for in the transit budget that will be proposed on July 15th? And Penny, can you please provide an update on the implementation of the Transit Network Plan?
Of course. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Penny Feis, Wichita Transit. We have 50 buses in the fleet, 11 of those are electric. We have 38 vans, eight of those are electric. And once those are in service, which is expected in September, we'll look at the current inventory of vans to see if any can be retired due to age and condition. For question number two, yes, the local match is in the proposed budget that you'll be seeing. It's gonna be in the CIP. Due to the date of this NOFO coming out, which was just in May, it's not gonna be an exact amount, but through discussion with finance, we've determined that we do have sufficient local match. And then there'll be an item coming before City Council before the end of the month to move forward with the next phase, the Transit Network Plan, which, as mentioned, is implementation. So that should be here before the end of the month, with the goal being that we're all online in preparation for the multimodal facility, which is opening next year.
Thank you very much, Penny. And to get more information about Transit, just go to wichita.gov/Transit.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I see none. Good luck with that application. We will open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I move to approve consent agenda item number seven.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated July 7, 2025.
Morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, July 7th, for the following items. For engineer, engineering, we have the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Project Pump Station 10, electrical gear replacement for Killian Electrical Service Incorporated for We have the 2025 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program Joint and Crack Seal Phase 4 Rebid for Conspec Incorporated Doing Business as Kansas Paving for $99,109.80. For purchasing, we have the Hydrovac Excavation Services for Utility Maintenance Contractors, LLC, for miscellaneous rates, estimated annual usage at $35,000 per year. We have the self-contained breathing apparatus cylinders for Ed M Feld Equipment Company, Incorporated Doing Business as Feld Fire for $200,160. We have the mechanical screening of street sweepings and finished compost for Brooks Landfill for Evergreen Recycle LLC for the miscellaneous rates, estimated annual usage at $36,085, accepting option one per ton rate of $85. We have two Pierce Velocity Aerial Fire Trucks for Conrad Fire Equipment for $4,658,144.48. We have the Trash and Recycling Containers and Collection Park and Facilities Contract Change Order for Waste Connections of Kansas Incorporated for an estimated monthly amended amount of $18,378.09. We have the Liquid Feric Sulfate Contract Change Order for PennCo Incorporated, requesting authorization to extend the contract 90 days to October 31st. This is how to become a vendor with the city of Wichita. This is a purchasing calendar of small business resource partner events that the city is hosting or participating in in the community. And I should have an open public opportunities, but I will be happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, Josh. Any questions for staff? I see none. I move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts dated July 7, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing in request by Hill House LLC for approval of a letter of intent to issue multifamily residential revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. This is a request that came to us by Hill House LLC. They are a limited liability company that was specifically created to develop and construct two three-story buildings with 18 multifamily units in each building for a total of 36 units on an existing tract of land. The request is the issuance of approximately $3 million in revenue bonds to finance the project. The property is located at 200 South Hillside, on which the buildings are to be constructed. The building, there's an existing building on the property today, that building is currently vacant and in major disrepair. So the project will include demolition of that existing building and then construction of the two new multifamily residential buildings. The project will be built with workforce housing in mind, and the owner developer intends to offer rents that are below market rate. So based on our economic development guidelines, the project qualifies for a 40% property tax abatement based on capital investment between $1 and $5 million. The estimated value of the 40% abatement for the first full year is approximately $31,000, broken down between city, county, state, and USD 259, as you see it there on the screen. That is not my slide. That is not my slide. So I'll continue. The owner developer is also eligible for a sales tax exemption, and the approximate value of that sales tax exemption is about $112,000, city share being about $8,500. A cost-benefit analysis has been performed. The cost-benefit analysis does exceed the one-to-one, as identified in the economic development guidelines. Those numbers are included in the green sheets in the agenda reports that've been distributed and available online. My opportunity to kind of throw out our standard disclaimer around revenue bonds. Revenue bonds are a mechanism for achieving a sales tax exemption. In a revenue bond transaction, the city's not lending any money, bears no risk. The owner developer is required to achieve its own financing. No taxpayer dollars are at risk. Additionally, all costs associated with issuance of the bonds are borne by the owner developer. Additionally, Hill House has agreed to pay all costs with issuing the bonds and the annual $2,500 origination fee. The bonds will be purchased by Hill House or one of their related entities. All the bond documents will be prepared by outside counsel, but ultimately, Law Department will review and approve once the project is complete and we bring those back for you. So therefore, it's staff recommendation here today to hold a public hearing, subsequently close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. And with that being said, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. We'll begin with Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And this isn't a question, I'm sorry, but just an observation. Thank you, Troy, for all your work on this, appreciate it very much. During this process, I learned a new term that now I am stealing of workforce housing. I had not heard that before, so did a little research, AKA the Google, before. And workforce housing refers to options for affordable housing for individuals who have moderate incomes. We often talk about affordable housing for low income, but we also have to think about people who are, you know, working and still struggling, and usually it's between 60 and 120% of the median income. So just a new term that now I'm stealing and really appreciative and extremely thankful that the applicant is also thinking of this segment of our community that desperately needs housing, so thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, Troy. We'll begin with, I know that this item was supposed to come before us a few weeks ago. Can you tell us one more time what was the reason why it got delayed?
There was a discrepancy in the address. Previously, we had notified that the address was 220 South Hillside, and as it was brought to our attention, that that was not the correct address in our public notice documents. We elected to pull that from the council agenda and sort of start over. No fault of anybody other than just a miscommunication between when the application came in, when the cost-benefit analysis was conducted, and ultimately, the documents were prepared. There was some miscommunication between the address of 220 South Hillside versus the actual address, which is 200 South Hillside. So we started the process over again, just to make sure that there was no miscommunication.
I know that this is now, I think, the third instance where I know an address has been either the number has been transposed or the number is incorrect on an address. On the consent agenda, we actually had an item where the plot of land was a different number. So I just want to caution staff to be very cognizant that those numbers need to be accurate, so then we don't have delays in issues like this. And I wanted to be transparent in understanding why it was delayed, that it was not because of any issues with the actual project, but rather the address was wrong.
Correct.
Thank you, Troy. The next question I have, I don't know if the applicant is here, but would like to understand the reason why they have chosen workforce housing as a focus, because we do want more of that in our community. We want all types of housing. And so if we could have the applicant share the reason why workforce housing, and also share the approximate rents that you're aiming to share with the community.
Yeah, so this project is one that we've spent a lot of time perfecting and designing, and we've noticed, especially in Wichita, there seems to be a gap between new-built apartments and things that are truly affordable, that are under $1,000 in rent, and there really isn't much inventory for new-built apartments that are sub 1,000 rent. So our aim is to rent these below $1,000 a month, average rent, across the board. And we achieve that by material choices. We've got some internal business connections that allow us to source certain We've got some internal business connections that allow us to source certain materials for less expensive than would normally be able to be sourced. And then also, we're building these in neighborhoods that are really walkable. We aren't putting amenities into the projects, which saves us money, and we're able to pass that on to the renter. And we kind of view the neighborhood itself as the amenity.
Definitely an amenity. College Hill is a great neighborhood.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson's district. And you mentioned walkability, it is a great neighborhood. So are there plans for more workforce housing around the city of Wichita?
Yes, so we are planning to, as long as the site is the kind of site that we feel like this project's appropriate, and as long as there is a need for inventory, we plan on continuing to replicate this project.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions for staff or the applicant. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none, we'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Councilmember Johnson's district.
Thank you, Mayor. Really happy to see two things. One, this type of workforce housing being built here in the community, it's definitely a need as we need more housing opportunities. But two, us as a city working to incentivize in some way, using the IRB tool or any other tool that we can to start getting these types of homes built and living opportunities. I'd love to see this, I'm glad to know that there's more coming down the pipeline. I hope to continue to see these opportunities, especially new builds at a thousand dollars a month or around that. That is excellent, especially with some of the quality of housing situations that we've seen in this community. This type of thing is what we need for sure, so I'm glad to see that, always glad to see it in District One. With that, I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Lease agreement for city-owned property at three oh seven to three oh nine North Mead.
Good morning, Jerry Ford with Development Services. The item before you today is the lease agreement for the cinema retail space with Subor. The, how we got here, the city-owned parking garage is located in the three hundred block of North Mead, and it includes seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-three square feet of total retail space. This space is divided into seven independent retail and restaurant spaces. The spaces are managed by a property management company on behalf of the city. One of the units, this particular unit, contains four thousand, three hundred and eighty-four square feet and is currently leased to a restaurant. On February fourth of two thousand and twenty-five, an amendment extending the lease was presented for approval. The item was deferred until April first, or April first, and subsequently tabled until a new lease agreement could be agreed upon. Concerns about that lease were the lease type, the term, and the rental rate not being reflective of the current market. The original lease agreement expired on April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, and the lease continued in a holdover state for the months of May and June. The lease was renegotiated from a modified gross format to a triple net format. The rental rate was increased from seventeen ten a square foot to nineteen a square foot. The new lease rate is a combination of the base rent at ten dollars a square foot, together with the additional rental rate estimated for the expenses at nine dollars a square foot. The lease will continue as a year-to-year lease with four one-year options to renew at the same rate. The annual gross revenue from this lease is eighty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six. However, this amount could be adjusted depending on expenses. If the expenses are decreased, the tenant will receive a credit on their next month's rent. If the expenses are increased, the tenant shall pay the deficiency on demand. A three percent leasing commission is due to the leasing agent. If all five years are exercised, the total commission owed for this lease is twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents. It is recommended that the City Council approve the lease agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. I have with me today the representative from the Property Management Group, and anybody, all of us are available for any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Jerry. Questions for staff? I see none. I have one question for the group that is here. I just wanted to hear what you're seeing in terms of demand for these types of spaces in the Old Town area, given that there have been a lot of different activities going on in the downtown slash Old Town district.
Morning, Mayor. Morning. As far as activity, well, we know that the, the existing tenants have been there for quite some time. With the marketing, we have seen a little bit of activity. Unfortunately, our agent is not available at this time.
Is it still a sought-after location?
What I'm seeing, we've had a little bit of interest, some questions, but right now, the center is full, full capacity. So the marketing, it does not show any vacancies at this time, but we know that can change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no further questions for staff. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none, we'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to take the recommended action for City Council, approve the lease agreement, and authorize all necessary signatures.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Two thousand and twenty-four Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of the City Council. I'm Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Before you today, to present to you the two thousand and twenty-four Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or what we like to call the ACFER. The ACFER is probably one of the most important documents that we produce. It's a record of our financial activity and our financial status in two thousand and twenty-four. But what makes it even more important is that it's reviewed and audited by an independent CPA firm, and they provide an opinion about our financial statements. By the way, this is what our ACFER looks like, and it is available online, so it's a lot of information. As I noted, our auditor is independent from the city. However, we work very closely with them throughout the year, and we have a very productive partnership with them. We seek their guidance and advice throughout the year on our financial practices, so they're very valuable to us. And I'm pleased to tell you that the results were very good this year. We had what they call a clean audit, or what you'll hear about, you'll hear it referred to as a unmodified opinion. That is very good, and we're very happy with that. Now, our annual audit each year is the result of a lot of really hard work by a lot of people, primarily staff in the Controller's Office, and specifically by Nikki Babcock and Luke Stoltz. I have the easy job, all I have to do is present it to you, but they do all the work. They usually start in December, and they work a lot of hours, particularly in May and June. So I express my appreciation to them and their diligent efforts. And as I mentioned, our ACFER is available online, and our recommended action today will be to receive and file the ACFER. So with that, I'd like to introduce Brian Stavanger. He's with Eid Bailey, which is our external auditor firm, and he will actually go over the audit for you today.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Thank you, Mark, for the introduction. Really, for everyone's knowledge, we were able to meet individually yesterday and talk a little bit more in-depth about the audit process and audit results, and then here today to provide that high-level overview of those audit results. A little bit about Eid Bailey, because we only get in front of you once a year. We're a top twenty CPA and advisory firm founded over a hundred years ago. We work with over twelve hundred governments across the country in both an audit and consulting capacity. Have over three hundred dedicated professionals to work within that industry. Here's the service team, which is really, this is just kind of the higher level. Myself, Jamie, and John, all consistent from previous years, and then we have several other CPAs and professionals to help round out the audit team. The objectives of the audit, really, there's, what do we have here? Five different standards that we follow. It really starts with the very top one, the overarching principles and standards that any external auditor needs to follow. And then because of your local government status, you have different federal and state audit standards that are required. So this is all the variety of those standards, which ultimately lead us to our opinion on your audit. Our objectives as auditors, based on the standards, is to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that your financial statements or this ACFER is fairly presented and free of material misstatement. Really, what that means is we're not looking at a hundred percent of activity and transactions. We're taking a risk-based approach to gain that reasonable assurance. Here's the timeline, really begin in earnest in November and December, continuing through January and February. This is all very consistent with previous years. March through May is where the bulk of the work takes place. This is all a mixture of onsite visits and remote slash virtual work. And then we issued our audit opinion on June twenty-fifth. As Mark mentioned, yes, we spend the bulk of our time working together during this timeline, but throughout the year, we are talking at a minimum quarterly, just to make sure that we're checking in and providing assistance as best we can. Management's responsibilities, so I've talked a lot about our responsibilities. Management's responsibility is really to make sure that this ACFER is fairly presented in accordance with all the required rules and standards. And then they also need to maintain, design, maintain internal control that would allow for the proper recording and reporting of information, and really minimize the risk of any material misstatement. So not only producing this significantly sized document with a lot of valuable information, but also ensuring that there's adequate controls to ensure the accuracy. Another reminder of what our responsibilities are, essentially, we are auditing or confirming that the amounts and disclosures within that ACFER are accurate, materially accurate, following all the right rules. If there are new standards to implement, which there was one this year, just ensuring that those are implemented appropriately. So really, here's the, one of the key slides, an unmodified opinion, which Mark mentioned previously, that's a clean opinion. The best opinion that you can receive, and really, the one you seek out every year. As I mentioned a little bit ago, there was an adoption of a new standard. GASB stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They are the standard setter for local governments, I should say, state and local governments. There was a new standard this year. It had a minimal effect on the ACFER of the city, but it was to ensure that compensated absences are reported correctly. As a result of our audit, too, we can have a clean, unmodified opinion and still potentially have findings based on internal control deficiencies that we've identified. In the case of the two thousand and twenty-four audit, no findings noted. The federal audit, the federal audit is really guided by the federal government. They lay out the different criteria as to what programs we will look at. We generally are going to look at the larger programs or the larger federal expenditures programs that the city has. These four that are listed are the ones that we looked at in detail. A lot of compliance testing, as well as internal control testing, also a clean, unmodified opinion on those four programs in that single audit or federal audit, and no findings to report either. Another federal requirement is the passenger facility charge, and we have a clean, unmodified opinion on that report as well, with no findings. A separate document that's issued, separate from this ACFER, is a letter to governance and management. We went through that yesterday with all of you. Really, three main items that I wanted to point out here in this presentation. This is required communication, it's about five pages long, really, three of them that I want to touch on. Significant accounting estimates, when we're going through an audit, I would say an easier audit procedure is to contact the bank, contact the bondholders, and say, the city says they have this amount in the account, or they owe this amount, please confirm that with us. On the easier side, the more difficult side are these accounting estimates, long-term pension liabilities, OPEB liabilities, health claims paid, or I'm sorry, health claims incurred but not reported yet, and then compensated absences. In those four areas, the city does rely on some independent third-party specialists to aid in coming up with those accounting estimates. And so we just spend a little bit more time understanding those relationships, those entities, making sure they're qualified and have the proper experience. Sensitive disclosures, so this ACFER, as you've seen, is a long document. We're closing in on, I think, over almost four hundred pages. Just a few items that we pointed out as, if you were to just want to look at the highlights or the more sensitive areas, we pointed those out within that letter. And then we also point out if we have any past adjustments. So what that means is if we, as we conduct our audit, we have different thresholds that we undergo or we follow. If there's something that rises to the level of needing to report in the governance letter but not a finding, it's kind of in that middle area, we call that a past adjustment. Management identified a donated asset that was received in previous years, unrecorded also in previous years. It wasn't caught until two thousand and twenty-four. So again, not rising to the level of significance in a finding, but just pointing that out in the letter to governance. Any questions before we get to the last few slides? Other engagements that we have either completed or in process, we do some agreed-upon procedures engagements. Those top three, those are really driven by federal or state statute, just ensuring that landfill, sales tax bonds, and star bonds are following appropriate protocol. We have a few AUPs still in process, which are very similar to previous years. We usually let, complete that HUD submission in September, and then the ICE Center and Century Two projects are completed usually in the fall. Two weeks ago, a partner of mine, Leland Miller, was, met with the retirement boards to present the results of that retirement system audit, so that was completed and has been presented. So what's next? You know, I'll start with the bottom, as we mentioned, Mark's mentioned, I've mentioned that as well. We're staying in touch throughout the year, as well as we have all these different resources for the city to access. It's been a great positive relationship, really minimizes any surprises when it comes audit time. We make sure we address things throughout the year. Maybe what's most important is we've got three new standards coming down the pipeline in the next couple of years. While this is, this is challenging as auditors to keep having to learn and help our clients implement these new standards, probably even more of a burden on staff. So you've got one in two thousand and twenty-five, and then two upcoming in two thousand and twenty-six. I will tell you what's incredible, as we wrapped up this audit, what, June twenty-fifth? And I think less than a week later, staff, Nikki in particular, was already looking forward to some of these standards. So staff is on top of them and ready to be prepared going into any audit cycle. Okay, I'll pause again for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Mark, bless you. Are there any questions for staff or Brian? I see none. Thank you again for the presentation to the council members yesterday. I don't see questions, so we will now open it up for public comment. I see none, I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just like we talked about yesterday, I'd like to go from page A five over the next four hundred pages, line by line. No, I just wanted to say it's really good to see this report. Again, any of the issues that we talked about yesterday, everything was addressed. I'm glad to see that our staff does a wonderful job with our finances and continuing to see how good we look as a city. So appreciate your time and efforts, and of course, our finance team for working on this and everyone else.
I too will chime in and just thank Mark and his team, as well as Brian and Eid Bailey, but also would like to recognize that we have an internal audit team that does a great job. Thank you to Christina Rose and her team. And so I am very appreciative that we not only have an external audit, but we also have internal audits. And that is, again, a great thing for our city, so that we are making sure that we are compliant, but also making sure that we're trying to excel in. are compliant, but also making sure that we're trying to excel in the city of Wichita and its sixteen different departments. So with that, I will move to receive and file the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, before you approve, I just want to add one more thanks, and that's to Nikki Babcock, who really coordinates the team and puts in long hours in order to get us to this point. So again, I think it's important that she be recognized for those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you to Nikki. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing in request by Forty-Five Enterprises LLC doing business as Leadfoot Express and Leadfoot Solutions for approval of letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So this request comes from Leadfoot Express. Leadfoot Express is a courier and messenger-based business that specializes in urgent and custom shipments, custom crating, metal fabrication for aerospace industry. They've experienced rapid growth over the recent years and are anticipating continued growth and are looking to expand. With that being said, they are requesting the issuance of approximately $3.65 million in revenue bonds to finance their expansion project. The project's approximately a thirty-two thousand square foot expansion of an existing seventy-five hundred square foot facility at sixteen fifty-one South Eisenhower Avenue. The completed project will be used for industrial, agricultural, manufacturing, warehousing, distribution operations, and general storage. According to our economic development guidelines, the project qualifies for a hundred percent property tax abatement, broken down as follows. Again, capital investment between a million and five million dollars qualifies for forty percent. They're anticipating job growth in the twenty-six to fifty new job range, which qualifies for another forty percent. They are also a part of the regional growth plan sector, which qualifies them for an additional ten percent. And in addition to incentives that they are seeking through the city, they are also seeking incentives through the state. So by utilizing state federal and utility incentive, they qualify for a number, another ten percent for a total of the hundred percent property tax abatement. This will be a five plus five review, though, because of the job creation that's associated with it. The estimated hundred percent property tax abatement in the first full year is estimated at approximately ninety-seven thousand, broken down as follows. Property, excuse me, the project also eligible for a sales tax exemption. The value of that is estimated at about $139,000, with the city's share being approximately $10,000. The cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development Business Research, and it exceeds the one-to-one ratios required in our economic development guidelines. Those numbers are provided for you here on the screen, as well as in the agenda report. Standard disclaimer, revenue bonds are a mechanism for achieving a sales tax exemption under property tax abatement. In a revenue bond transaction, the city's not lending any money, there's no risk. The owner developer is required to achieve all of its own financing, there are no taxpayer dollars at risk. All costs are borne by the company requesting the use of the bonds. Additionally, Leadfoot agrees to pay all costs of issuing the bonds, as well as the annual origination fees. Bonds will be purchased by Leadfoot or a related entity. Again, all bond documents, once the project's complete, will be prepared by outside counsel, but ultimately, law department will review and approve the final form. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation, the city council, hold a public hearing, close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. And we do have representatives from Leadfoot here in the audience with us today. Otherwise, we'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. Questions for staff? Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Troy, I know that this applicant is also taking the steps to do special assessments for improvements. Can you talk a little bit more about that as well?
That I'd have to get back with you on.
Talk about it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was crossing departments.
That's okay. Thanks.
Good morning. Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. I believe you're talking about the paving petition that was presented last week. Yes, special assessments, and I believe that estimate was $200,000.
And it's covered by the applicant?
Yes. And there was a benefit district, so there is one other party within that petition as well.
Yes.
Any further questions for staff? I will just ask the applicant to come forward and just share, I know that twenty-six new jobs will be generated, and we are always looking for businesses that want to continue expanding or relocating to Wichita. So can you tell us this growth plan?
Sure, absolutely. Good morning, Council. Thanks for having us up here. Yeah, so the company was acquired by the current ownership group in 2013. Since then, the company's at least tripled since then. Last year, we brought on a metal manufacturing shop to kind of also bolt onto our crating shop. Between the two of those companies, we project significant increase in revenues with our existing customer base and also customer base outside of the state of Kansas. And that's in conjunction with our courier and trucking company as well.
Well, thank you for continuing to expand here in Wichita and providing jobs for our community members.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I see no further questions for staff or the applicant. We will open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Councilmember Dalton Glasscock's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to highlight one of the, on the cost-benefit analysis, some of the returns were thirty-one to, thirty-one to one, some of them were close to seven to one, and there are a lot of returns for this type of investment. So I want to thank you for your leadership. I know that I've been out to your location, I think maybe twice, to look at different properties, and you are investing in Wichita, you're investing in South Wichita, and so thank you for that, as the mayor said, and we appreciate it. So with that, and seeing that there's nobody else on the board, I move that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Design and concept and, design, concept and funding for Mount Vernon and Hydraulic
Good morning, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. The item before you is the Mount Vernon and Hydraulic Intersection. And I think I locked the computer. Thank you. On June sixth, 2023, the city council approved an agreement with Baughman Company to develop design concepts for improvements to Mount Vernon from Southeast Boulevard to Oliver. In October of 2022, Kansas Department of Transportation had solicited intersections to be submitted to receive Highway Safety Improvement Program funding for the fiscal years of 2026 and 2027. In November of 2023, city staff received notification from KDOT that the intersection of Mount Vernon and Hydraulic was selected for HSIP funding. On January ninth, 2024, the city council approved a supplemental agreement to design the intersection of Hydraulic and Mount Vernon as a separate project. And on June fourth, 2025, the District Three Advisory Board approved the design concept. The slide before you is the location of the improvements, and again, this is at the west end of the overall project, from Southeast Boulevard to Mount, or to Oliver. The existing intersection is an asphalt roadway with curb and gutter, curb and underground storm sewer, and it is two lanes in each direction. The proposed concept will reconstruct the intersection with concrete, improve geometric geometry, replace the traffic signals, make American with Disabilities Act ADA upgrades, and add turn lanes for westbound Mount Vernon and southbound Hydraulic. The hydraulic was overlaid as part of the OP-3 program in 2022, and restriped from four lanes to three lanes. And the intersection improvements will include one lane each direction with a dedicated left turn lane for all approaches, and a southbound right turn lane on Hydraulic, as well as a westbound right turn lane on Mount Vernon. The project will also include on-street bike lanes on Mount Vernon, and that will complete the on-street bike lanes from Greenway, which is just east of the Arkansas River, to Woodline for a total of four point five miles. The existing budget of $250,000 was approved by the city council on January ninth, 2024, and is funded by local sales tax. The adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program includes $200,000 in 2025 for this project. Staff requests initiating the full amount for a revised budget of $450,000. And the adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program also includes $3 million in 2026 for a total budget of $3,450,000. $2.2 million of that $3 million is the Highway Safety Improvement Program funding from KDOT. It is recommended that the city council approve the design concept, revise budget, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Councilmember Mike Hoheisel's district.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council approve the design concept and revise budget, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Amendments to Chapter 4.08 of the Code of the City of Wichita relating to the creation of a common consumption area for the consumption of alcoholic liquor.
Good morning. Sharon Dicra, City Law Department. As a little bit of background, in 2017, the Kansas Legislature enacted statutes allowing cities to designate certain areas where alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverages could be consumed on otherwise unlicensed premises. In 2018, the city enacted Chapter 4.08 to allow common consumption areas within the city. At that time, the city was not designated in the ordinance as an entity that could hold the permit. Several cities have adopted common consumption areas in their downtown core areas. In these cities, the city is a holder of the permit, not a private citizen or entity. In response to requests from Delano Merchants for a common consumption area, the following amendments are recommended. Allow the city to be a permit holder for common consumption areas. Remove the requirement that streets be closed in common consumption areas. Originally, the legislation passed by the state required that they be closed. A subsequent amendment changed that, and streets can be allowed open through a common consumption area. We reduce the length of time for the initial permit from six, from one year to six months to allow a trial period, for lack of a better term, to make sure that the CCA area is going to work. And it would allow common consumption area to be within three hundred feet of a church, park, or school. The ordinance does require that to be a special consideration of the council when they review those types of permit applications. I do want to make it clear that what you're doing today is not approving a CCA area in Delano. It's simply setting up the legal framework to allow you to do that at a later time, if that's what you decide to do. Financial and legal considerations, as the permit holder, the city would be responsible for any insurance signage and barrier costs. The insurance broker estimated costs for additional insurance coverage to cover alcohol-related incidences to be approximately $25,000 per year for a million dollars in liability coverage. That was based on an initial estimate. We did not file an application for insurance at this time. Public Works estimates that the cost for signage would be about $300 per sign. The state statute in the city's ordinances require some sort of signage or barrier. So it's clear to folks that as I'm walking down the street, I have to stop and dump my liquor before I go on to an area that's not within that common consumption area. There is also one additional cost the city would have to apply for, a state common consumption area permit, and that is $100 per year. As the permit holder, the city would be legally responsible for any liquor violations occurring within the common consumption area or off of the common consumption area if folks take liquor or alcoholic beverages outside the designated areas. It's recommended that the city council approve the proposed ordinances, place it on first reading, and authorize any necessary signatures. And I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sharon. We will begin with questions from council. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Sharon. I have one quick question. I want to thank you, I want to thank the police department, I want to thank everybody else that was involved in these discussions over the last couple of months to bring this forward today. I know it was a lot of work, so thank you for that. If this were to pass today, how long do we think it would take for the city to present a permit application that could be approved by the council?
I think staff would need some sort of direction as to exactly what the area would be that you're talking about, and then we would need to determine what security we would have, if any, where those signage would be. We'd have to lay out a map. I would say probably thirty days, and I'm going to look at Isaac, thirty days, thirty days.
Thank you. Would you need that direction from council today about the general location? Or is that something based on conversations and based on, really, conversations about Delano Merchants that we could move forward with drawing up a permit application already without direction from the council?
I, I think staff needs some direction from council as to what, what all they want included in that area. I know generally, the discussion was generally Seneca to the river, and then carve out a way to get to the ballpark. If that's the general direction, staff can work with that, but I do think we need some direction as to how large you want it, how far north and south you expect the area to go. Simply saying Seneca to the river's pretty vague.
Would that need to be in formalized language as part of my motion later?
It could be, or it can be a direction from the council to the manager, and then we bring back what options we would have.
I will look at that when I'm ready to make a motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you for all your work in this and for the Wichita Police Department for their work and for Councilmember Glasscock for bringing this to our attention. I have many questions, but it seems like, like, for example, how many signs will there be, and da-da-da, how will they be posted? And so, but it sounds like, instead of going through all my questions now, it's probably better to wait until the next time this comes to us? Is that what I'm hearing?
That would be entirely up to you. We can answer what we can answer.
But through the process, we'll learn more about the boundaries and...
Yes.
Okay, when I met with, with Councilmember Glasscock in Wichita Police Department, I had lots of questions that would just, you know, like to bring to the public. So I will pause on my questions until the next phase of this project, but thank you again for all your work on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sharon. I have a specific question. So there are three cities in the state of Kansas that currently have that permit. Is that correct?
There's actually more than that.
Oh. Can you tell us exactly how many, because our green sheet only shows three?
I just named three. Lenexa has one, Overland Park, I believe, has one, Topeka has one, Manhattan just recently got one in their downtown core area. There are a number of smaller cities that have areas, frankly, around their VFW club that they have opened up. But I would say there's probably somewhere between ten to twelve that I could locate ordinances on.
And in those instances, the ones that you were able to research, what was the insurance cost for them? Were you able to find out how much they were... insurance cost for them? Were you able to find out how much their insurance coverage was?
That varied depending upon what risk the entity was wanting to take. Topeka did not get any additional insurance coverage, is the information that I received. And they are essentially relying on the Tort Claims Act, that there is a cap in the Tort Claims Act of five hundred thousand dollars, and then any applicable immunities. My conversations with Manhattan were that their insurance brokers thought that they were adequately covered. The rest of them, I did not specifically ask that information. A couple of the cities, and I want to say Lenexa, their common consumption areas are on property already owned by the city. So they're a farmer's market kind of situation, or if we wanted to do the plaza on the farmer's market. I mean, that's publicly owned property. It just allows liquor from different licensees to come onto it.
Thank you. And again, the estimate is the the twenty-five thousand per year, but that's just an initial estimate. You don't have actual specific.
No, because we didn't apply for insurance, and it would depend whether we're talking about one in Delano, whether we're talking about one in every quadrant. I mean, it's going to vary depend upon how many are approved and how large those areas are.
Just and to repeat what Sharon said before, we'll have a lot more details when we actually bring the Delano common consumption application to the council. We're talking about charging a fee to participating businesses. That will be included. Again, details on signage, and there are other technicalities on a common consumption area, including the type, the cups and everything else. So we'll, all of that information will be provided to you in detail. This is enabling legislation.
Thank you. And again, the Delano district covers two council members' districts. It's both in District Four under Councilmember Glasscock and District Six under Councilmember Ballard. So I will refrain from asking further questions until we get through this. But the two individuals who mostly are affected are Councilmember Ballard and Glasscock. I see no further questions for staff. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, and I'll keep watch over the board. I will refer to Councilman Ballard. She has comments real fast.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff and everybody that has worked on this, especially Councilmember Glasscock. I am excited to explore this. My only concern is I don't want to, I want to make sure that we're working closely with WPD. I don't want to create a space where we're working so hard on the mental health crisis that we're dealing with in our city. And I certainly don't want to create a space where it might target people to go to an area, and then the police are not able to enforce in the way that we might be able to do that now. So I am absolutely willing to look at a pilot and see what happens. I'm excited for, you know, to do something different in this area as especially as we finish start the development around the ball field. I think it could be something really fun. I just want to make sure that there aren't any unintended consequences that we aren't thinking about all the way through as we push forward on this potential project.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody that's been a part of this. I think I originally brought this to the council in February of last year to look at. And so thank you to staff for your diligent work on it. I think we've answered a lot of the concerns that we worked with the Wichita Police Department on as well. I want to thank all the businesses that have engaged in the process so far. And again, we have another step to move forward, but this is one step in the direction. I want to specifically thank the Monarch, Wichita Brewing Company, Vagabond, and a lot of other conversations I've had with Macassos, other small business owners in Delano about the possibility of moving forward with this project. From my research, it was more than more than a dozen to two dozen common consumption areas that are in the state with very little problems. I know Shawnee County has two. And that's where I was really inspired to bring forward this idea of looking at Topeka's downtown core and how it's created this vibrancy along their main street, and seeing how we can create Delano as a unique destination for our community as well. For me, this isn't just about carrying a drink. It's about creating a walkable, connected neighborhood that supports small businesses, enhances tourism, and also gives people the ability to linger, live, and invest in Delano. And I think this is just one step that can separate this part of our community and make it a destination center as well. So I look forward to working with staff on bringing a permit application. And so I'm going to try to craft a motion and let me know if this is all you need for the motion to move. I move that the city council place the ordinance on first read, authorize the necessary signatures, and direct staff to move forward with a permit application for a common consumption district in Delano that would run around the borders of Seneca to the river, from alley to alley, and connect to the Ball Stadium, and work on a permanent application that includes those boundaries or about those boundaries that could be brought forward to the city council.
Second.
Motion and a second any further discussion. I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Agenda. Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll begin with Councilmember Agenda. I did not put this on the agenda, but I think that it warrants a discussion. We just celebrated America's two hundred forty-ninth birthday last week, and there's a major movement to celebrate America's two hundred fiftieth birthday next year. It's called America Two Fifty. And so wanted to hear this council and what efforts we can do. I know that Wichita, when America celebrated its two-hundredth birthday, one of the big initiatives was the Mid-American All-Indian Center, and so as well as the Keeper. So I wanted to hear your thoughts about how to celebrate America's two-fiftieth.
About all the council lines up and sings Wichita Lineman? Well, I want to hear JV belt it out. Yeah.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for bringing this up. I do think we should form a commission, figure out what it looks like to celebrate two fifty for our community. I think that shouldn't involve community members, and maybe that's how we can start, is bring a list of individuals that can be voted on by the council to a temporary commission to plan two fifty celebrations for twenty twenty-six. But I'd be interested in future future discussions and how we can maybe leverage things that the community is already doing. I know the two fifty celebration is to celebrate America's stories. So how can maybe we celebrate Wichita's contributions to the American story? How can we elevate Wichita's stories? I think that's something that this council should look at and should be here to celebrate our country and the freedoms it offers.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I have some ideas, but I'm probably not ready to share them publicly. I didn't know we were going to do this today, so I maybe need a little bit more time. But just a historical note, and Bob or Councilmember Johnson can maybe help me, when we're going to celebrate Wichita's birthday, I know that Park and Rec was responsible for pulling together a committee. I think I started on it before I was on council and then while I was on council. So I like the idea of forming a committee that is community-based, community-driven, and Park and Rec might be a good place to put that as we did last time. Just a thought. And sorry to give Reggie and his team more work.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the committee idea. And I think Parks and Rec would be a good place to to run that. Indian Museum, also Cowtown, would be great, too, just reflective of our our past. But honestly, any number of our museums and public spaces should be open to a series of events. It doesn't even necessarily have to be one weekend around the fourth. So yeah, let's have this discussion and let's think on it for a bit and continue to move forward with it.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I'm only the one that can remember the two-hundredth. But I agree, the two-hundredth was a year-long celebration, both nationally and locally. Wichita did a lot of things during that time. It was really pretty cool, and I think we should be able to do that again. I agree, maybe if it's Parks and Recs, some kind of commission to get that together and get it going. Very much favor that.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I agree and would love to see the committee extend an invitation to U.S. President Barack Obama to come to Wichita. Send his mom as remember.
Any other comments? I would really just encourage the community to reach out to your council members with your ideas. Also, if you're interested in helping out, also reminding us if there are any big milestones that are happening next year that could be incorporated with a year-long celebration. But you can always find our contact information at wichita.gov/citycouncil. And you can reach out to your council member where you live and share your ideas and your feedback about celebrating America's two fifty. So thank you for having that open discussion. And I appreciate seeing that there is an interest in forming either a committee or a commission. I know at the state level, Representative Susan Estes is heading the America's Two-Fiftieth Celebration for the State of Kansas. And so we will work closely with her. And I know that there are other cities here in Kansas that want to celebrate together. So I encourage that and look forward to more conversations regarding this. But again, please contact your council member through wichita.gov/citycouncil. We will now move to Councilmember Appointments. Are there any? I see none. We will now move to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just my weekly conversation about our budget coming up and hope that people engage us. I was just made aware of someone I know and some results from another community. So if you haven't heard or seen, Baltimore Mayor Brandon Scott has been very successful in reducing crime in Baltimore. First half of twenty twenty-five, they've seen the fewest homicides ever recorded. And some of that is due to the investments that they've made as a municipality. Cure Violence is one of those investments, and he was one of the first people to talk to me about that. But they've been doing that in Baltimore. Investments in the community, forty-two summer youth camps, twenty-nine literacy programs, extended parking rec hours, planned block parties, et cetera. Crime is down sixty-two percent. You might ask why I'm talking about Baltimore. Well, if we look at Wichita's numbers based on what WPD just put out, year-to-date versus the five-year average, look at those numbers, crime is down in every category. But one, if you look at the year-to-date, this year versus last year, crime is down in every category. But two, and when you think about what we've been doing here in the city of Wichita, we're investing in libraries, parks, and rec, art, all of those opportunities, cure violence. We also did make sure law enforcement was given the bonus that they deserve. We made sure fire was able to get compensated as well. But we've been making those investments in quality of life initiatives. So as we're looking at priorities going forward, one of the number one things we continue to hear about is crime reduction, making sure that our community is safe. The numbers show it is, but we have been making some really good investments in the community and want to continue to highlight that those are necessary to achieve those types of things. Using Baltimore as an example, that's just because Mayor Scott, before he was mayor, talked to me about a lot of this. I see him implementing everything that he talked about, working with his council. We've been doing some similar things, and we're seeing some similar benefits with crime being down in all of these categories. But my fear is if we do not continue those types of investments, and we've talked about reducing some of that, that we may see that trend go a different way. Again, it's not always law enforcement, public safety in that way. Oftentimes, it is these other opportunities that we need to invest in and keep maintained or increase to see these numbers continue to go down in the way that they are. So thank you, Mayor.
Any further comments from council members? I see none. We cannot leave yet. We have an executive session. So I will now read, "I move that the city council recess into executive session for thirty minutes to receive information on executive branch directives pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for legal advice. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest." It is now ten forty-seven. We'll take a short little break. Let's begin at ten fifty-five AM. And thirty minutes after that, we will return at eleven twenty-five AM back here in the chambers. Motion?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
I. I shut down my computer.
Motion passes seven zero. We'll return at eleven twenty-five AM. Thank you.